This meeting to order, Brainard Planning Commission, Wednesday, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. New session. David, could you do the roll call, please?
Jaeger.
Yes.
What word?
Yes.
Foley. Calrus. Erickson.
Yes.
Gorham.
Yes.
And Duval.
Present. All right. With that done, time for pledge of allegiance. Is there a member who would care to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight?
I will, sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right. All right, item four on the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted or recommend amendments to the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, Jaeger.
Erickson, motion. Jaeger's second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. All right. So we're at item five, approval over the regular meeting minutes of July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
All right, Gorham, second?
Second, Jaeger.
Jaeger's second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. All right, old business. We're at item six A, final plat, lots one through seventeen, block one, North Town, first addition. Director Chansky, could you set that up for us, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. So this is the replat of what is currently lots, um, twenty-four, twenty-four through forty of, and out lot C. It's block nine of North Town addition to Brainard. This preliminary plat was approved by the planning commission. The preliminary plat for this was approved by the planning commission on April twenty-first, and then the city council approved it on May third, so this is coming back for the final plat with this because it is replating and changing, um, changing the dimensions and such and getting rid of outlot C. It is, um, they do get a new plat name, so it is now, if approved tonight, lots one through seventeen, block one, North Town, first addition. As you can see, the requirements for our final plat, the final plat shall substantially conform to the approved preliminary plat and phasing plan. This one does. Completed development contract, including all required financial securities and timeframe for final plat and final grading. There is no development contract being required for this plat. Conditions attached to approval, the preliminary plat shall be fulfilled or secured by the development agreement as appropriate. There was one condition placed on this plat, and that was that the commission wanted to see language for conservation easements for all lots that really essentially covers the section of the former outlot C that will be taken into these lots to ensure that they stay in their natural state. The property owner, Tom Dean, has drafted, have had, has had conservation easement language drafted. You actually can see the draft conservation easement is in the packet itself. Let me go back to my findings of fact here. Here we go. And we just called out what the main things in there. There's a whole legal language in there, but the main elements when it comes to that outlot C area is that the landowner for itself, its successors assigns covenants and agrees that it shall not itself perform, nor shall give permission to any third party to perform any of the following activities within the easement area. They are constructing, installing, storing, or maintaining anything made by man, including but not limited to buildings, structures, fences, walkways, clothesline poles, and playground equipment, parking of vehicles, planting of gardens, trees, shrubs, bushes, or other landscape vegetation, storage of firewood, clearcutting or removal of native vegetation or trees. And then there's an element of things that can be done in the easement. It says landlord, the landowner for itself and its successors and assigns further covenants and agrees that the easement area shall be continued in its present condition, save and accept as may be required to control, manage, and eliminate noxious weeds and probit invasive species. Noxious weeds, both primary and secondary, defined and adopted and listed by the Crow Wing County Soil and Water Conservation District, shall be removed, but only in accordance with recommended and accepted control methods. Vegetation that is considered to be a nuisance, example of her hanging, damaged, or dead limbs, or vegetation protruding through fences, or presents a real or potential hazard, personal property, may be trimmed in accordance with accepted standards. Allow the city to use and exercise its easement rights to the portion of the easement area that may be encumbered by a drainage or utility easement, or allow any federal, state, or local government agency other than the landowner, which may have jurisdiction over the easement area to enforce any rule, ordinance, statute, or regulation. And the final requirement for final plats is that all fees, charges, escrow related to preliminary or final plat be paid in full, and those fees have been paid in full. All of their elements of the findings of fact are as they were in the, from the preliminary plat is approved. Again, as this is a final plat, no public hearing is required. Staff does recommend of the approval of this final plat and conservation easement language with no alterations or conditions. Mr. Chair, I'll take any questions that the commission has.
Thank you, Director Chansky. Any questions for David? David, I have, has this easement been reviewed by city council, counselor, couns, the city attorney?
The easement itself has not, no.
That guy.
That guy. He has not?
No.
Okay. So the city of Brainard is, will, um, under this draft easement, be the holder of the conservation easement and responsible for enforcement of the terms, correct?
Correct. And before the council will adopt, will adopt this, it would be reviewed by the city attorney?
Okay. Is there the opportunity here tonight to make amendments to this language, or is that, um, well, quite frankly, is, uh, is the applicant present, online, or not in the room, obviously?
He is not. But I don't believe that there would be an issue if there's any, um, language amendments that you would like to make or have additions. I think, I believe they would be open to that.
All right, well, um, you know, one of the, one of the points that I made when we, um, approved the preliminary plat, um, was the notion that the lot lines going through this easement, that means that every adjoining property owner has a, a defined spatial interest in that property and, and I, I'm, I sense this is going to be terribly messy for the city to, to enforce as, as several different lots, as opposed to one contiguous outlot where the adjoining property owners have an interest in it. I know I made that point before that was not, um, shared by others, but I just want to restate that that's going to be a problem here in my mind. And the other, the other consideration for actually adding language, um, planting of trees, shrubs, and bushes is prohibited under the restrictions number C. And, and what is allowed is some management to eliminate noxious weeds, but it seems to me that there should be an allowance to do some sort of restoration in the event of a catastrophic event, wind throw. You know, say, um, a disease or pestilence goes ripping through a stand, you know, like, uh, the, the ash borer that's coming, uh, coming our way, and it's a predominant ash forest, then you don't have a forest anymore. The attribute you're trying to preserve is no longer present, and I, I wonder whether we should, and I feel pretty strongly, not only wondering, but I feel pretty strongly, we should allow, um, you know, restoration in the event of a catastrophic loss of trees as maybe a, a number four under the, um, allowed uses, the, the exceptions, I guess, except as may be required. Those would be the points that I would make. Any other thoughts on those or reactions?
Mr. Chair, may I have a clarification?
Yep.
First, I'll go to the last element on the allowing for restoration. Are you looking for just trees or any vegetation?
It would, it would be in my mind for the trees, and the emphasis would be on restoration, replacement with, replacement with native trees and not, cultivars or things of that nature, which is, which purposely excluded under C is the cultivars and non-natives.
And then the other concern, the question I had, um, clarification of, is, in the plat, final, again, what you're talking about, about the interest, is in the final, if you look at the final plat, the lots do run all the way through the old lot C. So where you see that dat, that dot, that dashed line in the final plat, that's where the lots used to end. And essentially, that dot, that dashed line now represents where the easement area begins.
Correct.
So you don't like that it's individual lots?
Correct. I don't, I don't like the fact that those property lines extend into a conservation easement area, which in effect makes the city responsible for one, two, three, um, for, for individually managing seventeen conservation easements, as opposed to one. And so, you know, there, by drawing those, those lines through that easement, in effect, what you're, what you're, what you're doing is, is, is creating the message that this is my area and I can do these things that would transgress the terms of the easement.
And I understand, I understand that. I'll just say, um, obviously, without the applicant here, but having communicated with him about this is, that's actually, that was the purpose of the whole plat, was to get rid of that outlot C entirely by taking it into those individual lots.
And, and my point would be to say that your petition and interest in that overall contiguous outlot C, divide that interest, and you could divide it equally into seven, seventeenths, if you would, and everyone gets one seventeenth of that interest, um, or alternatively, you might just imagine those lines figure the area and prorate it that way, but I think a more equitable way would be one seventeenth interest for each of those property owners.
I'll, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, I think the only comment I'd have on that is, going, going back to your question about enforcement, is if we did a one seventeenth share, say, you and I are both property owners, you violate the easement. There's really no way just to, to put it on you. We have to kind of put it on everybody. Versus here, I can say, this is your area of the easement and you violated it. Everyone else is fine. You violated your piece. If it's a share and someone violates it, it's kind of hard, it's, it's, it's much harder to tag one person with that violation.
Fair enough.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Jaeger.
Um, and my question is pertaining, uh, how these outlaw, how these, how this would affect individual lots' impervious surface. So it, it, it's, and that's where I think that the lines helped me a little bit, is, is each lot then has a, has a lot mass that is definable, for instance. They wouldn't be sharing one large mass and trying to divvy up seventeen percent of impervious surface. Is that how, is that what, is that how you see this being used? Hypothetically, if impervious surface comes up as a topic, eat, like, lot seven has a definable outline and their impervious is based on that, or is lot seven one seventeen, get to add one seventeenth of the total outlot to their?
In the, yes, in this situation, uh, anytime a home is going to be built on this, when we do the review and, and the impervious surface calculation is calculated, we would take the entire area of that lot as it is, for example, if it's shown, if it's a seventy-five. By now, um, say it's three seventeen, I'm looking at outlot five, we would calculate it based off that whole area, including the easement area. In the situation that Commissioner Duval was suggesting, it, it sounds like that would essentially be its own lot. Then it actually wouldn't be in that calculation at all because those, because it's a separate lot.
They wouldn't be able to use the landmass at all.
Correct.
Not seventeen percent of it. They wouldn't be able to use it at all.
Correct.
Okay. That, that's my question. I wasn't going anywhere with this, other than just understanding how that would work, play out in a, because some of these lots are greatly different size than each other, so. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Erickson.
Does the city have other examples of this, where we hold that easement, and how is that enforcement in those examples, or how, can you give me a sense of what our enforcement would look like?
So, looking at this, I think, um, I don't have another example where we have held an exact easement like this. Where the enforcement would be, again, is, you know, I don't foresee my staff actively out there, you know, doing rounds and inspecting the easement area. It would come pretty much be if it was brought to our attention. Um, and then if it was brought to our attention, you could say that would be then the city's, the, the city would then have the ability to take action against the property owner. That would be the benefit of the city holding the easement versus, um, another third party holding that, you know, say if, if, if Thomas Allen Holmes held the easement, they would have to, if, if, if a property owner violated the easement and it was reported, it has to be reported to them, then they would be responsible, if they even want to, to take action. And then there's that question of if Thomas Allen Holmes ceases to exist as a company, what happens to that easement? So there's that benefit of the city, is you know where it is, and then the city has that ability to take action, um, against any violations of that easement. And again, it would be based off of if it was reported, we wouldn't necessarily actively be out there looking for it.
Okay, thanks. And then, could I ask?
Yes, Mr. Erickson.
Not really follow, but another question. Um, it was the, pretty much the applicant's request, or, it's not that we're imposing this conservation easement on the, the developer, the applicant, that was.
It was brought up.
Either friendly to that idea or wanted to do something similar, correct?
Yes, he was willing to do it. It was brought up about concerns about, um, I believe there were some neighbors during that public hearing who had concerns about those that are on Riverside Drive, but what could happen to those, and that's where he said he'd be willing to put conservation easements in. He has done this before, and I think it's pretty much the same kind of easement he has done before in other, on other developments. So that's where the kind of the came in was, he'd be willing to do this easement to ensure that the vegetation did not get, um, removed.
Other questions? All right, well, hearing none, um, at this point, I think, uh, be looking for a motion to adopt a recommend approval motion, a recommend approval of a final plat with conservation easement with no alterations or conditions, except addition of a number four for vegetation restoration in the event of catastrophic loss of trees.
Oh, I'll move to approve with that addition of the fourth, allowed, um, restoration in the event of catastrophic loss of trees.
Motion by Erickson, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Woodward's second. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. All right, so we are on to item six B, sober home, request for accommodation form. David, can you set this up for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So last month, uh, if you had a discussion with the city attorney regarding the regulations of sober homes and all that may entail, the direction the, the planning commission gave to staff was to, uh, take and develop a request for accommodation form, similar to what we've seen that we, that they did in St. Paul. Uh, the intention of the form would be, um, it'd have a couple of benefits. One, it would allow us to begin actually effectively tracking sober homes in the city. Um, it also would give us, um, as a city, the ability to determine if a sober home was truly and actually a sober home. And then I see the third element, too, is when it comes to accommodating, if they're requesting accommodation from a specific ordinance, allows us to also determine if that accommodation is truly necessary, or is there a lesser accommodation that can be made? Generally speaking, when it comes to accommodations, what we're just going to be seeing is from section, uh, four twenty-five and, and that, uh, that request of accommodation from the no more than four-piece unrelated persons in, uh, in a unit. So I did go ahead and draft a form. Uh, the city of St. Paul has two forms. They have a general request for accommodation form, and then they had an addendum. Um, what I did is I kind of took those two forms as a template and made one. At this point, we haven't really necessarily needed, um, a request for accommodation from, in other areas, we haven't expressed that. So right now, you could easily adapt this to be a general form, but right now, since we're focusing on sober homes, made it specific to sober homes. It's walking you through it. It is a five, uh, this, this draft, again, a draft, it'll be, um, what the final version would look like, would be reconfigured a little bit to fit the form of most rest of our application forms of the city, city's logo and such, probably fillable PDFs. But it's walking through it. Right now, it's a five-page document, pretty simple information, the applicant's information, uh, the property information, as it may be different, obviously, than the applicant, um, what they are requesting, uh, accommodation from. I left that blank. I thought about putting, actually, putting in their four twenty-five and then letting them do it, but they might be another section of ordinance that they're actually requesting accommodation from, so I didn't want to limit that. So they have to put there the section of code, their request accommodation from, and then the reason for that request. And then we move into some reporting information, and these are the questions that really kind of help us determine, um, A, does that, what they're doing really need support, the requests they're making, and are they truly a sober home? I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you want me to walk through the entire form and the questions behind it, um, or I don't know if you, if you've had time to review it. If you just want to have any questions for me, I'm open to doing either.
We can dispense with the reading, um, if, if members are comfortable with that and get the discussion on it, or if we would like to step through it. Is there, anybody care to, to step through this so that we make sure we've done it, or we've had a chance to read through it?
I've read it.
Yeah, I don't think we need to read.
So what?
Take a pardon?
I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, why don't we dispense with the reading, specifically, and, and perhaps get to discussion on this? Are there particular questions, um, David, that you, um, wanted to draw our attention to, or items?
So the first thing I wanted to just say is, uh, as a matter of process, how this would be used, would be, this would be something that we would, um, kind of add as an addendum to a rental housing license. Um, that's, all sober homes have to be rental, have to have a rental housing license, um, because they're not owner occupied. And, um, and so when they would come in, obviously, we'd start getting some questions of what are they trying to do? If we determined, sounds like they're going to be a sober home, we'd ask them to fill out this information. Um, we would, and they would have to be, they'd have to fill this out and staff review the information before we actually issued a rental license. Also with this form, if, um, they don't have to fill this out once, so the first time they get a license, they don't have to fill this out every single year. Once they request accommodation, if accommodation's approved, it's done. Um, however, if that, if there was any change to that accommodation, they might have to refill it out. Um, so say they have a, um, as I'm going to have a sober home, I'm going to have, I'm requesting six individuals in my home, okay? You're requesting an addition of two. You fill this out, we approve it, so we meet all the other requirements. If at some point they want to move from six to eight, nine, ten, et cetera, they would have to come back requesting, and then with a new form, request accommodation again, because now they're requesting accommodation up and above what was already approved. The benefit of that is to ensure that, one, we're tracking it. Um, it also ensures that, um, they're not going to be exceeding, it would help us to ensure that they don't exceed future occupancy limits. Um, any structure, um, that's going to be a sober home, especially if they're requesting accommodation, one of the things that would happen is the building official would, and the fire marshal would determine is can a structure actually accommodate that number of people? If we're asking, if it's a two-bed, one-bath home, and you're asking to put eight people in it, well, we have to determine that eight people can actually fit in a two-bed, one-bath home per the fire code and the building code. So that's one of the things that would happen before this was approved, is can your structure physically meet all the, the request that you're making? And so if someone is going to go from six to eight, we'd go back out and review, can you fit eight, or are you going to have to make adjustments before we can approve this, just based off of occupancy limits? And that is something that the FFA, FFHA does say we can limit, and it's purely because it's, it's a safety issue, is having two, making sure that bedrooms are the right size, there's eager windows, et cetera. So that's really kind of a process perspective, how that would go. What we're proposing in this form is that it's staff reviewed and then staff approved. It could be approved by, uh, the council, if the planning commission thinks it needs to be. Um, right now, we're just recommending that it be a staff review and a staff approval. We are requesting, when this is submitted beyond with these questions, that they are submitting a parking site plan. While, again, our, our ordinance doesn't have a requirement necessarily, um, because we, most times, these are considered single-family homes. We are request, requesting a parking site plan, so we actually can at least go through it with them and understand parking, and then if, I think part of this discussion that the planning commission had here was, this is step one, and if we start seeing issues, it allows us to start tracking those issues. Parking plan helps us do that. If we start seeing that, you know, every sober house that's coming in, you know, they're planning and putting eight cars on the street, well, that might be a problem that we need to look into. A copy of their house rules, uh, that goes into, are you an actual sober home? If you're a true sober home, they're going to have house rules. We want to see what those house rules are. A floor plan showing the layout and specification, the number of beds in the house. Again, that's something that would, would be used by the building official and the fire marshal. And then any other information that they want to give to explain their answers. So those are going to be what we're requesting in addition to the answers here. And again, the questions in general are all designed to, to determine, are you actually a sober home? Do you operate like what a general sober home operates? You know, it's, it's a truly a culture thing? Um, is it, it's not a, um, a chemical dependency home? It's essentially, it's not a treatment facility? Um, most people going to sober homes, they're coming out of treatment. This is not like you're going court ordered to go here. We don't want this to become essentially a treatment facility that's separate. So it allows us to determine that, this is, you know, this is the next step after treatment, not the treatment. So I think that's, for the most part, all I have to add, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David?
Yes, please.
Jaeger.
Thank you. Uh, I'm assuming Mr. Langle will review this if he hasn't already, or is, uh, he'll, will he be looking over this at some point, or has he already?
He has not yet, but he will.
Would that be a step in this process, uh, after us?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my only other comment is, there was a question there, and I don't see it right now, but, uh, the, the one that struck me, just rang in my ear, was the question about an affiliation with a religious organization. I just, can you tell me what that stems from, or, or what we're trying to fret out with that?
I don't think we're necessarily trying to fret out with that. Sometimes some of these questions are trying to figure out what is the, um, how they operate.
Okay.
And so stemming with a religious organization would help us also understand just who's kind of running these. You know, is this, is this becoming essentially a mission of a church? You know, um, because then what also helps is if there are issues, we could also then go to that organization and say, hey, we're having some issues. We don't seem to be getting through with them. You have an affiliation with them. Can you talk to them? Because it's not working.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Stan? David, that one jumped out at me as well. Kevin, you know, I think, um, I'm trying to think about how I use the answer to that question, and, and whether that's problematic to actually collect that answer. If it, if it doesn't solve, the example you, you, you gave on the quick here was that if I've got a, an issue with it, I can go to that organization, but I can also go to the landlord if it's not affiliated, um, and, and be able to get at it the same, you know, issues the same way. Would that?
Yep, and I was also added, this is something also St. Paul had in theirs, and I think the other element, too, is it, is if they are associated with another religious association, there are additional protections that they suddenly have. So there is that, you know, if they're associated now, now they're going to, we, we just have to be aware of that because there could be, you know, freedom of religion issues potentially involved that we have to be aware of. This is not a question that, you know, I'm, I feel strongly about. If the commission thinks it's better just to remove it, that's fine.
Yes, Ms. Woodward.
Could we amend that and add in, are they affiliated with any religious institution or other nonprofit?
Absolutely.
I, I think that's an excellent suggestion. I, I think that's an excellent suggestion. To adapt more broadly. David, I, I think, um, I think Attorney Langle may find the blending of the forms, um, could be problematic in, in that we are specifically then calling out sober homes, and I, and I think in his, his, um, advice to us and guidance to us i- in, at our previous meeting, um, you know, the, the, the request for accommodation can be more broad than just for a sober home, an addiction dis- disability. It could be for other, other kinds of practices, and, and so that form then, that, that, that first form that, say, the city of Saint Paul had, gets at that general request overall, and then there are these um, more refined questions that came out in the addendum for the sober homes, and I, and I think that was very purposeful. And, and I, I, I think it would be wise for us to maintain sort of that, that primary accommodation request, and then the supplemental, um, accommodation request, so that, so that we are, are treating a broad class of, of individuals in our community under the rental ordinance, and, and there may be reasons, say, that a, a group of tenants may request a, a special accommodation, um, you know, in, you know, to the, um, family size, as an example, that may not, um, relate to, um, addiction, but other, other protections, and maybe that, you know, it, 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 it may serve us well to have that form still as a separate primary form and the sober home, um, house questionnaire, uh, addendum. Other comments or thoughts or questions?
I have just one.
Yes, Mr. Ericson.
Small comment, the correction, the last question right above required attachments, I think it should read, who refers residents to the?
Thank you. So I'm trying to get back to, you know, the collective recollections here, um, Director Jansky, um, liaison Erickson, um, you know, the original motion from city council, as I, as I heard it and understand it, is to come, come back. So first of all, to work with Attorney Langle, to, to understand the, the playing field, if you would, of, of what can and cannot be regulated. Come for, come back to the city council, um, to, to, to basically lay out, here are the things that the city could regulate regarding sober homes. And, and I don't know that they were asking for us to come directly back with, with piecemeal things, but kinda maybe giving them the, 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 the overall suite of options. That's kinda the way I heard it. I don't know if, uh, liaison Erickson, do you recall, I mean, it was sort of a, 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 a jumbled kind of a motion in a, in a way, the way it came about?
Yeah, definitely to go back, work with Attorney Langle, determine the parameters. I'd have to double check. I think there was a piece about making a recommendation. But it could be in two parts. You know, that might be wise to come back and cause there's just a lot of information here. So like, understanding the parameters and then coming back with the recommendation might helpful. Um, as opposed to, here's the parameters, this was that big issue that, you know, a lot of residents showed up for, now make a decision for it. So I mean, I guess laying out the parameters, introducing this concept of this letter and why, as part of the, you know. So, uh, it seems like you were saying maybe in two parts, I, I think I could see some value in that.
That, that's the way I understood the, the charge from city council was to, to, to explore and come back to us and, and, and report back, what are the things that we can, we can regulate?
Yeah.
I would expect of a, a subsequent action, charge from the, the city council to say, okay, of these things, we would like you to go work and, and refine these, get, do the public hearing business, or whatever needs to be done, um, to be able to get that work done.
Yeah, cause I think that's something we struggled with, was what are the parameters? We'll make a decision, but what are our parameters to, within, within which we can, we can work, and so relaying that in the same manner, I think, could be helpful. Same manner which we grappled with it.
You have a comment?
No, nope, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement, yeah. I, I think that the drafting of this was our doing, asking staff to help, help us create a mechanism of which we could pre-qualify what was going to be a sober home, not a sober home. So I, I see this as a part of the conversation, going back to city council saying, this is what we know we can control. We've also are recommending, at least review, looking at this document for acceptance to, to just per first, pre-qualify just who we're talking about and who we're not. Yeah.
Just to add, it, it allows us to qualify and quantify.
Right.
Kind of the two things we're looking at. What is, and how many?
So I think at, at, at this point, um, you know, there's, there's maybe, maybe some things to play back to Attorney Langle here. Um, um, and, and then I think, I think maybe we need one more conversation on this to say, what is the, what is, what are the elements that we bring forward to city council to say, here's, you know, after working with Attorney Langle, after thinking through some of these things, these are, this is what we think the city of Brainerd, um, can consider regarding, um, regulations for sober homes. Would be my, my proposed steps.
I think also, you know, I can provide a report, kind of the, this conversation about, we're gonna do a final review with Attorney Langle, have a final discussion amongst ourselves, and then we're gonna bring back the parameters, kinda lay out the timeline. Um, I think that'd be, I think they're gonna, council would wanna see or hear, kinda what, what can we expect for timelines? Especially in terms of responding to residents.
Right.
Yep.
And, and David, uh, it, it might be helpful for that final conversation to have, um, Attorney Langle. Would we have to bring him here? Could we have him, um?
He could attend remotely.
By remote?
If you feel that it'll be beneficial enough that he's remote, he could attend remotely.
I think, I think we would want him accessible for whatever that final conversation or what we bring forward to.
Especially about the part of what, I mean, he made it very clear to us, the, for me personally, the part that we can control, what we can't control. So he was, he was very, very good at outline, you know, laying that out for me personally. So I think, uh, I think city council would find benefit in having him lay that out first, or at least part of the conversation of the presentation, and then how we got to where we are.
I would, I would back up from there to say, you know, at our, um, planning commission meeting, when we sort through what we would, what we would, uh, present to city council, that we finally have him accessible as we finalize, this is what we're gonna.
Before, also.
Correct.
As well as at the presentation?
And he would, he would be present already at city council.
He attends, he, he, as, as long as he's not out of town or something, he's always in, in attendance at city council.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Erickson.
Timeline would be next city council, I'd provide an update, David and I in conjunction, and perhaps the attorney. Um, a brief update about the timeline is what to expect, a little bit about what we discussed. And that timeline would include, we're gonna have one final discussion amongst ourselves with the attorney before making a, a presentation then to city council about, kind of findings of fact about the parameters of what we can act on. And then after that, then we would make recommendations on what to act on.
Correct. So that, you know, there's, your next city council meeting, um,
Brief update.
Is, is a briefing on, on this, um, between now and our, uh, September meeting, um, Director Jansky, you could, you could, um, um, touch base with Attorney Langle on, on the separation or the blending of the.
Correct. The two forms.
Accommodation form here, is there, is there a value in keeping those separate, or can they be blended, as you've tried to do? And bringing that back at that, that meeting, I think. And then, uh, Attorney Langle being at our September meeting, I think we could, we could package this up, I think, pretty quickly, and then following that meeting, I guess, would be getting on the agenda of city council.
Correct. So I think that timeline, looking at my calendar, is, would be, actually, potentially, the planning commission meets, uh, September fifteenth, so, we may be able to get it on the agenda for September twentieth. It could be a tight turnaround, depending on what the planning commission decides, be able to put that package together. Um, cause the packet would have to go up the next morning. Um, otherwise, it'd be October fourth.
It might be reasonable to say the October fourth.
That probably would be best.
Allow us any contingency.
Pack sure, um, package it up.
And room to, room to, to still react to, to, you know, salient pieces of the discussion, so.
Correct.
Is that, is that a reasonable, uh, calendar timeline that you can present to, to your fellow alderman?
I think so, and if we hear anything different, I'll report that back. But I think that's fine. As long, as long as they're informed along the way, which is what next meeting will provide an update.
All right, well, I think, any more, um, comments or thoughts about the direction that we're heading on that? Topic. Hearing none. I think there's no action at this point, other than, um,
I have the direction I need.
Back to staff to, to pick up a few other items, so. All righty. So, new business, we have none.
Correct.
So we are going to public hearing, um, or public forum. Um, do we have anybody online? Boy, all right, well, I will open at, uh, six forty-three and close at six forty-three and a half. And three quarters. So with that, uh, I think we're at item nine on the agenda, community development director's report. Director Jansky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just have a number, uh, a few items tonight. Um, first, update, a couple CUPs, the, the CUP at North, at two ten North West Fifth Street, uh, for that, um, auto dealership with Associated Auto Shop, uh, was passed by the city council as recommended by the city council, uh, by the planning commission. The CUP at three ten North Seventh Street for the Learning Center was passed by the, the city council this past Monday. Uh, they did add one condition, um, in addition to the planning comi- planning commission's recommendation, and that is for the applicants to work with staff to add greenery, uh, to the fence, um, that they have mentioned in the CUP that has been erected. Um, due to the, how that property sits, that house sits pretty close, pretty closer to the property line. Um, and within ordinance, they built, they built a six-foot fence, um, that goes up to meets to their front facade, so within, within ordinance. Um, some neighbors had, had strong feelings about that fence, so the council, um, put in the recommend, uh, 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 condition that they do work with staff. Um, James has already been, I think, in communication, will be in communication with the Earths on that, looking at options to, how can they, uh, I think it just kind of softened the look of the fence. It is a full six-foot privacy fence. Just soften the look of that fence using some greenery and what options, um, they would have, and, and the best way to get that done. Um, myself, uh, the Chair Duval, and then, uh, Jennifer Haskamp and, uh, Mike Lamb, we conducted listening sessions with the city council last Wednesday. Um, this was kind of in, out of a response of, uh, some of the council's reactions to the annotated outline. Um, so what we did is we'd had a couple different sessions where we met with the council members um, in pairs. Uh, we didn't have the full council participate, but most of the council. And it's an opportunity for us to really, truly was formulated as a listening session where we asked them questions, again, to help understand, um, what they're, again, kinda starting to believe, so what they think is, what the issues are with the zoning code, if any. Um, just having a lot of discussion on, I, I, we, we, we determined one of the issues we were having was a, um, a miss in communication, uh, misdefinitions, especially when it came to the definition of character. So the, one of the questions we asked all the participants, and, um, Fisher Erickson can also expound on this, and from his perspective, as a council member participating, um, was really kind of asking them, just right up, like, what is your definition of character? Um, because what we have found, that when it comes to character, there can be essentially two, there's two components with character. There's character when it comes to form, and the physical form, and there's also character when it comes to use. Um, and I think in our minds, we were always kind of, we were always in the, in that physical form world, and we realized not everyone was in that world with us. Um, and so, asking, what is, what is your definition of character, and then be able to thresh that out and make sure we're kind of all on the same page. Uh, I think it was very beneficial. Um, I know some of the council members that initially, I think, had some strong reactions to the annotated outline, I think came out of that session feeling a lot more on board, a lot more, um, in favor of what we're trying to do. Um, at this point, what we, we, we feel like with the direction that was given, um, when the annotated outline resolution, the, the, the motion that was made back in beginning of August, um, did give, we think, was plenty of support to continue. We got, um, the input that we felt like we needed from the council. Uh, we feel like the council is a little more informed and kind of on board. Um, so we are gonna keep moving forward with the, um, code. We're not gonna bother bringing the annotated outline back to the council. Um, but we have some issues that we know we wanna address and make sure that we're addressing as we move forward. Um, so I think in the next few weeks, you'll be hearing kind of what next steps are. Um, next steps really are begin, does begin the actual writing of the ordinance, so I think we're gonna, I'll be working with Jennifer and Mike to kinda figure out what is our action plan for that, what is the involvement of the planning commission, and so we can kinda have a plan moving forward. At this point, we did kinda get pushed back about a month, so at this point, we're still kind of shooting for maybe like a February twenty twenty-two, um, adoption is still what we're shooting for. So the next few months are kind of, the, the exciting stuff, the actual language, but um, we're gonna try to keep moving forward pretty, pretty quickly with what we're, what we're gonna be working on. Um, but also with an emphasis on making sure we're keeping the council informed. Um, what we'll likely be doing is, um, bringing the, as we work through sections, the ordinance bring it to the council, so we're not dropping a three-hundred-page document and say, please approve this. Um, you might, we might be having some workshop, or maybe a joint workshop of some kind with the council in the near future. Um, so stay tuned for more information on that. Um, on Monday, the council also approv- approved an interim ordinance that put a zone, a moratorium on amendments to the zoning code and the zoning map. Uh, we said we wanna move forward with this. Um, this was something that we felt that now that we're getting into the language, we wanted to get this in place. What this does is essentially exempts the city from the sixty-day rule. So if someone requests an amendment to the zoning code, um, it gives the city more leeway in working with them, so we're not trying to rewrite our current zoning code while we're trying to rewrite our current zoning code. Um, so if someone were to come, you know, in September and say, hey, I'd really like to see this changed in the zoning code, we say we have a moratorium on it, so we don't have, you know, so what we can say is, we're rewriting our code right now. It's the perfect time, let's have this conversation, you know, come talk to the planning commission. And, you know, if it's a way that we feel like we wanna go, then we'll absolutely, let's look at incorporating it into the new code seamlessly, instead of, again, adot, amending our current code as we're getting ready to kind of move away from it. So that's the purpose of that, um, moratorium. And then the last thing, I did wanna get a little bit of update, uh, back in May, end of May, when we had that special meeting where the, um, country manager came before you and to get, uh, that approval for the development stage plan of their PUD. So I wanna give you a little update on that, so I think I told you back in June, that did get approved by the city council. They went out to bid on their project. They went out to bid on their project, was in communication with their CEO a week ago, and they just opened up their bids. They had actually opened their bids the previous day, so earlier this month. They did tell me that their bids, not surprisingly, came in about ten percent over budget. Um, so they are going to go, about to rebid in January, but they are intending to still keep moving through the development process. Their, their goal is to, is to start moving dirt in the spring. Um, so I think we'll be starting to see, their next step is, um, we coming to the city council, probably to discuss some potential, some financial support, be it that be, um, you know, development fees or tax abatement, TIF, things like that. And then I would anticipate, the, this commission will probably end up seeing their final stage plan and probably closer to the end of the year, um, as they're going to start wanting, as they get ready to go out for bid again in January, um, probably also start submitting plans for review from a permitting perspective. Obviously, before we can approve anything, they have to get the development stage plan. So I would anticipate that they'll be coming back before the planning commission, probably sometime end of this year, beginning of next year, for their final stage plan. So just a little update on that, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any comments to community director?
I'll just reiterate about the, kind of the process for the zoning codes, zoning code updates. I think coming out of the workshop, um, we went to council with the resolution to approve the annotated outline, and, you know, in hindsight, I don't think the resolution was the appropriate tool. I think consultant were more looking for just a thumbs up, and so I think the resolution was just too set in stone for council. In addition, there was still some remaining questions that obviously came to light. So I think the, the listening sessions were helpful. I know they were for me as well, but some of the main issues that I think council had were, were resolved. And I think, you know, not, I don't necessarily think it got everybody fully on board, but it just, at least communicates the direction better. And so I think everyone knows what direction everybody's going to. We're all moving in the same direction. And then the only other thing I'll add to that is, I guess I anticipate to kind of ramp up my updates as liaison, as we're getting into more of the drafting of the plan, too, so. Look for that, too, just to kind of continue to keep council informed, coming off of this kind of little bit of a hiccup, really, so.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. David, um, the Highway two, Highway two-ten public input process is, is ramping up stickers on sidewalks and on the front steps of City Hall. Um, I think we had talked about drafting a letter from the commission on that. Is that our collective, collective recollection and-
I recall bringing it up, but I, I don't remember that we made that decision, but I, I brought it up at the last meeting.
Make that request. Is that something that we wanted to, to, to take action on? Particularly now, there's, there are working drafts of how, and they're looking for specific feedback and, and how secondary roads, um, coming into two-ten are being handled, how the traffic's being routed. That, that, that strikes me that it brings us back to whether we'd want to have some conversation about that and bring, bring some comments. So you've, have you had a chance to draft, draft any or react to that? Or was that not an assignment to, you know, because I'm only digging in the cobwebs here?
Yeah, I haven't drafted, we're working on that, kind of letter. What actually I was going to recommend, Mr. Chair, is, um, next month, is what we can do is, um, like, we can essentially bring the, the, the proposal that's out there in the public, which is exactly actually what the city council, pretty much the exact same thing the city council and the county board saw a little over a week ago, two weeks ago now, first, before they went into public comment. And what we can do is, if you, if the commission would like, we can, you know, I don't think it would take too long, is just kind of walk through all the, those elements. But the, let the, because I'd be comfortable, more comfortable with, let the commission call out, what are those elements that you really want to have honed out and really called out? And then that way, when we, when then I can go and draft a letter, submit it to, to, to MinDOT, we actually say, you know, in this section or in this area, and then in, over the, you know, you can call it specific areas and just have project overall, um, and have that form of, this is what the, the Brainerd Planning Commission requests and would like to see.
That makes sense.
That is a really good approach. That way, it's kind of coming more as feedback as opposed to a directive, letter.
All right, thank you, Dick, Director Chansky. So moving on to item ten, commissioner questions and comments. Jaeger.
I have just a couple quick things. I'll be brief here. Number one is, uh, the park board hired an outside firm, WSN, to help us create effectively what are, what we're calling design standards for all of our parks. This would be a kind of a global macro view document that says, this is the color of siding we should have, these are the color roofs, and yada, yada, yada. So just letting you know that the park board did receive a seventy, what they're calling a seventy-five percent draft. It looks very good. The park board was excited about it. Mayor Bede was in the meeting as well and was, was very well received. We hoping to have our final draft here in about a month. The parking commission is also nearing, uh, kind of the culmination of, boy, almost a year's worth of work, well, quite some time of work. And we are going to be drafting a rec, a formal recommendation of step of, steps of events to the city council. Part of that does actually contain some ordinance talk, so I'm assuming that will, will be before us at some point as well. So just keep that in mind, that's, that's on, in the works. And the only other thing I'll say is Memorial Park is almost done. I don't know if you've been by there, but the construction is, is nearing the end. We're in the last ten percent of construction phase, we had to get some grass growing and some, some, a few things, odds and ends here and there, but if you haven't been by, swing by, it looks fantastic and are super excited about it. So that's all, thank you.
All righty. Anyone else?
I have a, a, a comment or question, basically. Yeah. Uh, so I was spending all the time, quality time on the city website and looking at the, the planning commission terms. In my mind, my term ended twenty twenty-two, and I looked and it said, twenty twenty-three, the end of, and I thought, what the heck? And I went back and did the math, and my, uh, my first term was seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, second term was twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. So my question to Mr. Chansky is, were things adjusted somewhere along the line? Is that a typo? Because the way it is now, it's nice and neat. There, there are two people leaving every year. And I just wonder how I got a four-year term? I'm not complaining, I'm not complaining. I'm just trying to figure out how, how I got a four-year term.
Some adjustment.
There was an adjustment, but I think the determination that the planning commission would made, and I think we, we need to discuss this stuff, was having one of the terms, the three terms that come up, that's coming up the end of this year, be reappointed as a one-year term.
Tad volunteered for you, just so you know.
So that might have been what happened. So I think technically your term does end this year.
Okay.
And then one of the, one of the, one of the three terms-
Twenty twenty-two is supposed to be my last year.
Twenty twenty-two is, okay.
No, it's twenty twenty-three.
Yes, and so, I, now I remember what it is. So what we did is, so there's three terms this year, three terms next year.
Okay.
Is that one of the terms, I believe, was only going to be, I'd have to go back to those minutes, is only going to be reposted or as either a one or a two-year term, I have to remember, I have to go back to those minutes. And then the same last, same for net, the following year is one or two years. So then it would be a two, 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 and two, two and two. So I'll go back and I'll look and we'll make sure.
So my term probably-
Probably does expire at the end of twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, okay, twenty twenty-three is just-
Unless we change it to twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, exactly, you can never leave.
I, I will look into the-
Very Kafkaesque here, isn't it?
Look into terms.
Just curious, I'm not, not just a, just a question of curiosity.
You didn't want to be a fixture?
Well, no, I'm not complaining, I just thought, you know, I won something here, I got a four-year term? I didn't know there were four-year terms, so. No difficulty with it.
Ms. Woodward, you have anything? Mr. Erickson?
Nothing from either of them.
And, and I will just, just build on the, the comments from the, uh, listening sessions, and I was very pleased to hear that all of the commissioners that did attend, it was, it was a definite thumbs up, the, the concept and the direction is good, the, the details where we're heading, um, you know, is, is the place where there'll be a lot of interest on, on how we think about drawing lines and how we think about naming things. So that, and, and of course, I think this commission has a lot of interest in that, too. So that work is ahead of us and, and the city council members that we spoke with during the listening, or we listened to during the, um, listening session, basically, are, are looking forward to that part as well, so.
I will say, if I can, Mr. Chair, I think one thing we did hear that we, I think myself and Christian Duval and Mike and Jennifer are kind of all agreed on afterwards, is we're, we're going to refrain from using the words conservation and preservation moving forward. Those seem to be a trigger words for some people, so we're going to use those sparingly.
I thought my recommendation was to stack them. That was, that was not the conservation-preservation area.
I think, I think it was a, is a, you know, I think we request, your, your recommendation was a non-conservation-preservation area.
That's what it was, a non-conservation-preservation, thank you. So we refer to the minutes. So with that, I think we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Sumbuljaeger.
Jaeger is the second.
Second.
Woodward, second. All those in favor saying goodbye, by, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? We're done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.